You just put change on the price.
Okay, great.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, March 6th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role?
Mary LaKind.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Mayor Protem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel. Councilmember Kimpel. There's technical difficulties. I'll come back.
You use call.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Frito.
Here.
And Councilmember Kimpel.
Mr. Kimball, can you hear us? You can chat. Can you chat and let us know if you can hear us? He can text me, though, apparently. Okay, Mr. Kimball can hear us, and since you can, this is a double Windsor, not a clip-on. Thank you for asking. Um, okay. Before us, we have a consent agenda. Do we have any modifications to the agenda? It's, uh... Do you need us to read this modification? Is that what you're giving us, Mr. Tharnish?
Uh, I don't know if you need to read it or not, but it's a change in price and, uh, manufacturer for the backhoe that the water department is trying to purchase. It's still on consent, so I think if you're aware of the changes, you should be still able to approve it. But if you want to pull it out to discuss, uh, we can do that, too. I'm ready either way.
Yeah, if there's anybody who would like to pull this out of the consent agenda to discuss, we have to pull it out. Otherwise, it gets passed.
I'm good with it.
So if there's no modifications, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
We hear you. Mary LaKind.
Yes.
Councilmember Frito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven zero. Up next, we have a presentation from, uh, Silver Key Senior Services, Jason DeBueno. Did I pronounce that correctly?
So I'm gonna share this, I believe, is the way that we were intending to.
Okay.
And Mayor, while they're setting that up, could I share a question that I was asked just now, and I want to share it with the council? Councilmember Frito asked me why we brought, um, this resolution, uh, number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three to the council when it was already budgeted for. Uh, you've only given me the power to approve things over twenty-four, I mean, under twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And so anything above that, even though it was budgeted for, we'd like the council to approve.
We, we hold the purse strings. Mike, Mike gets to borrow them.
My, my, my question had to do that if, if we, if the budget has all these items on here and we approve the budget, we essentially approved the purchase of the backhoe. So...
But the public wouldn't see th- those big-ticket items, and there could be question as to where
Okay.
they were. So I don't...
And it's kind of improved over the years, because when I first got here, it was five thousand dollars. So we would, we would have a list of checks. We'd have a list of checks over five thousand dollars that we have to approve. Each and every one of them.
Okay. Mr. Boyan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity to present about, uh, an organization that's moved into the community and actually is part of an organization that's been here for over twenty years. So the organization that, uh, used to present to the council was the Silver Alliance here at TriLakes. And what's happened is that over the course of the last, um, couple of years here, we've been talking about how do we bring forward and expand the services of seniors to be able to address what is going to be a demographic that needs a whole lot more support. And one of the reasons that Silver Alliance, the Silver Alliance had become part of Silver Key was because of the strength of both organizations coming together from the history. Silver Key has been an organization that operates out of Colorado Springs and has been there since, uh, the nineteen seventies. And through that, it was originally, uh, an organization that was established to be able to address the loneliness and isolation of individuals that were moving to the community due to the better air condition of, of, uh, living in this area when people were having tuberculosis. And so they were separated from families and friends, and that's what started Silver Key as an organization. Over the course of several years, what happened is, is that many different parts of the organization continue to grow, like Meals on Wheels, uh, transportation services. We also have a full continuum of services for behavioral health care. And through that time, we now serve over, just shy now, of eleven thousand seniors after COVID. Eleven thousand seniors throughout the, the El Paso County region. And so what's happened is, is originally, we had only gone to the point of maybe interquest, and we knew that the demographic was growing here. We knew that Silver Alliance had been, uh, serving this community so well. And so we thought this is a good opportunity for us to dovetail together and really work in tandem to be able to expand the services in this community. And with that, we, uh, now are serving all the way through the, um, the north to, uh, all the TriLakes area, and we go all the way to Fountain, and then east, um, to Calhan and west to, uh, Teller County. And so we've got a larger, uh, kind of footprint that we serve now. And we do this by staying true to our mission, was to really expand the quality of life of individuals that are aging in our community, so that they can live with dignity and respect. In Colorado Springs, we're moving forward with building a fifty-unit affordable housing project, uh, that will be breaking ground in, uh, in May. One of the big conversations, however, was tap fees. So while it was kind of an interesting conversation there, I know what you guys are talking about when you talk about water. Anyway, uh, the value and worth and needs of all seniors will be identified and honored is really what our vision is. And that's really across the state of Colorado. Silver Key is seen as an influencer, not only locally, but, um, at the national level through an organization that we have that serves veterans. And with that, we are one of the only programs that were better, that was approved by the VA to be able to do a companion model of older adults with, um, companions that are either military-involved, active, or retired to be able to build that companionship. And, uh, the slogan that we have for us is "Aging is all of us." Hate to break the news to you, but unless there's a tragic situation, we're all aging. And with that, that means that at some point, somebody needs help along the way that you know or yourself will know. And what Silver Key intends to do is to be able to stay here for the long haul, an additional fifty years, to be able to serve the communities that we're involved with. And with that, right now, I'll just share with you just briefly, because of, uh, being in Monument, we do have the, uh, a groundbreaking, um, that we're working to eventually get enough dollars to be able to set the stage for a brand-new campus in this community. But right now, what we have is, uh, the support of the, uh, the local school district, and we have what's called TriLakes Senior Center. And for some of you who attended the open house, it was one of the biggest open houses that I think Monument has had for this kind of thing with older adults. It was huge, and we had a lot of great fanfare. We were able to get into, uh, the local media to recognize the importance of what the senior center brings to this community. And through that, what we were able to do is augment some of the services that were happening based on the senior center model by bringing in a broader, uh, meal program, so that we can address the malnutrition of older adults that happen frequently in the community. We were also able to expand our transportation. We have three people that were very much part of Silver Alliance. We have Sue, Melissa, and Laura. And we also have, within that group, people that are volunteering to be trained up to be drivers for this community. So that we'll be able to link people effectively to medical appointments, be able to make sure that they can get access to the meal program that we offer, and be able to bring them to other kind of community events that they choose to be involved with. Socialization and connection are equally important to having good, healthy meals. Isolation is a decay for people. If people isolate, they die before they need to. And quite frankly, it's tragic that too many older adults are passing away, uh, isolated and lonely. And with that, the way that we do this right now for both organizations is we have a, um, a major, uh, support that comes from our two thrift stores. Uh, and so you're familiar, of course, with the one here in TriLakes, but we also have one in Colorado Springs. One of the things that's happened is during the time of COVID, we had many individuals that were going into the hospital systems, and they were being treated and released. But one of the tragic situations is, is that when an individual was getting released, there were so many people that were moving out of the hospitals that even though a physician would be able to prescribe a wheelchair, a cane, a walker, and that would be funded by their insurance normally, individuals were being denied, which meant that if you were already on the low-income fixed way to be able to meet your, to get, have ends meet, and you're getting prescribed a wheelchair and your insurance is saying denied, well, the good news is, is you can appeal that. The bad news is, you can't stay in the hospital. You're out. And so that's where Silver Key stepped in and started to provide durable medical equipment support to people that are struggling with being able to have access for approvals, for insurance, for that care. And we've just expanded that into the TriLakes, uh, thrift store as well, to be able to make that more available for, for our communities. Uh, what this is, is, um, on the screen here, you see that the north, that is our expansion, the new, uh, Connection Cafe site, uh, where we do have many individuals coming in. And then we're surrounding that with additional lessons related to, uh, finance, managing personal finance, uh, yoga, uh, growth opportunities, behavioral health, grief counseling. All of this is wrapping around here in this community for those that need that care. Uh, quickly, we have, uh, Senior Health and Wellness Services. I've talked about the behavioral health. What you may not know is case management. Frequently, we have individuals that struggle with being able to link through systems. If you've gone through the county system before related to accessing Medicaid or Medicare, it can be a nightmare for somebody who's very impaired or very anxious. And so we have a team that pulls alongside to be able to help individuals move through those processes, so they get the full benefits that they're eligible for, to be able to manage that ongoing health and wellness. Resource navigators are individuals that partner alongside and move with. So when we have family members that have, um, left a family member because they no longer can manage mom or dad because of the dementia, and they're saying, "I'm out," our resource navigator step in to be able to help guide to and get to the right level of care for that individual. We also have a companionship program. This is about people volunteering to be part of the life of somebody, and it's, uh, it's fully, um, secure, and, and we make sure that we've got all the background checks. And these partners that put together that connection roots back to when Silver Key in the seventies was making sure we had companionship to keep people connected. And one of the things that I'm proud to say is that I was, I've been a volunteer at Silver Key since nineteen eighty-seven, and I continue to volunteer this whole time. I've been in this role. I'm going into my fifth year. So I, I'm new, not new to this organization. I believe completely in what we do, and the new part of Silver Alliance being part of is just getting that larger vision of being able to serve many more who are invisible. COVID did a lot of things that were unfortunate communities, but what it also did is it made the very invisible visible. People who were not accessing Silver Key or not accessing Silver Lion, what happened is, is they now have said, "I need help," because they were home and they were not getting access to the people that cared for them because of the concerns. Silver Key never stopped service. Not one day did we close. We did it safely, securely, and we kept providing services, and we grew to be able to serve so many more people than we ever had before. But to that end, when you get the invisible who are now visible, one of the things that comes forward is, is that we have to have the resources to be able to serve. And with that, I believe that the resources are available. We have been designated two years in a row as one of the best workplaces in Colorado, uh, in the Pike's Peak region. And with that designation, I hold true and, and, and completely that the volunteers are the magic behind the, behind the curtain. Our staff are there to support them. And through that, what we work to do is to be able to expand to a new building for this area of service. We are building the new building in Colorado Springs for fifty units, for people to be able to have a safe place to live with quality and independence. And we think that we're going to be able to expand to additional options for housing where affordable, affordability of housing is one of the challenges that we have in the older adult community. Fifteen hundred people today in the El Paso County region have no place to live in the older adult population. Fifteen hundred. That's a lot of people. So where are they staying? Sometimes they're in shelters. Sometimes there's Walmart parking lots. Sometimes they're couch hopping. I'll tell you what, a seventy, eighty-year-old couch hopping, just a scou- couch surfing. I think it's probably more hopping, not surfing. Couch hopping does not make sense. We have got to provide some solutions. And while it's not the only solution, because there's many different ways that we can address this, the TriLakes Senior Center is a bridge for people who have a place to go that's comfortable and safe for the moment, even though they may have some challenge in the evening, when they need to get someplace else and, and, and kind of be with friends and family. They've got a place where people care about them and will support them. This is just a list of, and this can go out, but this is a list of all of our social media. And we have, uh, one of the things that we have available is called the Silver Line. Ironically, Silver Alliance and Silver Key with the silver in the middle, that is our silver line. It's the one common connection for the entirety of El Paso County for any of the senior services that anybody would need. That's eight-eight-four-two-three-hundred, info at Silver Key. And I will let you know that as we expand into the local communities, we really look to the local communities to help resource locally. While we're a large organization, we serve a lot of people. We're a very lean organization, and we really depend on the local community help support. In the past, Monument, the town of Monument has supported at a level, level of about twelve thousand dollars. And I bring it forward a request to reinvest in this community, reinvest in the programming that we do at that level of twelve thousand dollars, so we can continue to expand what we're already doing. I will let you know that the, uh, the belief is, is, well, you've got Silver Key, twelve thousand dollars. Does that really matter? I will let you know that while we have Silver Key, we operate four hundred volunteers is how we accomplish our mission. There is no revenue for the volunteers to do the work that they do. So every dollar matters. I do, I did go to the Tal- of Calhan and Falcon and Peyton and these local communities. The small dollars add up to big impact. And I would ask you to reconsider that you would be able to bring that resource back to this community, or keep that resource in this community, so we can make sure that we're taking care of those people that are now visible and need the care and support that Silver Key at TriLakes is able to provide. I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? I, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that Councilmember Chronic was one of your drivers?
He's back there. Do I need to do a background check first?
Okay.
Yeah.
I knew she, I knew she was.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So where does the funds, the twelve thousand, does that go for the food part? Like, how is that?
Yeah, the...
Overall, our overarching.
It'll go to the operations of the TriLakes area. So we have several different programming in there. But if you wanted to specifically designate for the nutrition program, that's certainly an option. But if you go, this is the senior center designation of TriLakes, it's inclusive of all the things that we offer. And that may be a better approach. Being able to expand all the different things for behavioral health, nutrition, and case management.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, uh, just announce that Luke Kerr, one of our planners, uh, is working with Laura Chronic on this same exact project. So this is one of his biggest interests, and he wanted to work with Ms. Chronic on that, and so he's been assigned to work with her on, with Silver Key.
So grateful, Laura. Thank you. Thank you for being the voice.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, uh, ordinance number oh-five twenty twenty-three, and ordinance adopting and applying the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code twenty twenty-three edition and repealing the previous edition of such code. Ms. Booth.
I will turn this over to Roger Level, the building official for Pike's Peak Regional Building, who will be doing the presentation to you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Roger Level. I'm the building official for Pike's Peak Regional Building. And I'll just give you a brief history real quick of, uh, let's see, I guess, can I get the, the next slide real quick? Thank you. Give you a brief history of the department and how it pertains to the town of Monument. Uh, the, uh, building department was formed in nineteen sixty-six between the city of Colorado Springs and El Paso County. The goal at the time was to create a building department that had a consistent application of the codes across jurisdictions. It was, it was later that, uh, Monument, as well as six other jurisdictions, joined in that intergovernmental agreement. And we now serve a total of eight jurisdictions to include the city of Woodland Park, not Teller County, but the city of Woodland Park. What, uh, what's important about that is it offers a consistent application of the code across all boundaries, which is a real benefit to homeowners as well as contractors. They have one code throughout, basically throughout the county, with the exception of Calhan and Rayma, uh, to follow. It also, for the smaller jurisdictions, it also affords smaller jurisdictions access to the department's vast resources, to include architects and engineers and and a lot of the resources that we have as a, as building department. With that said, what we, what we do is we issue the building permits, and we conduct the plan reviews, uh, for new, new construction. Um, but each jurisdiction maintains their own local control of the zoning, the land use side of things. Every six years, we go through the process that we're in right now with review and adoption of new codes, and there's a number of reasons for that. Uh, we adopt the international building codes, which are, uh, their model codes. And they're model codes based on the fact that they understand that local jurisdictions will take those codes and modify them as needed for the the needs of the local jurisdiction, as well as, as first responders. Uh, they do modify or update their codes every three years. Historically, we've always been on a six-year cycle. There is cost associated with changing codes, not just for the contractors, but also significant cost to the building department in the form of, of codebooks as well. Uh, not to mention the extensive amount of time it takes to go through a code adoption process. We started working with this, working on this, uh, issue in twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-one, as soon as the, the model codes came out. And it was about eighteen months, uh, of going through the codes and not just going through the new codes, going through the two thousand fifteen code, the two thousand eighteen code, and comparing them all to, to what we have today. So it was about eighteen months of hard work before we had our first draft. Once we had our first draft, we published that draft on our website and really tried to get as much public input as we could. We, uh, our public information officer was blasting it out on social media, tried the local media. Surprisingly, they're not real interested in, in building codes. Um, emails to all our, all our contractors, letting them know what was going on, and it was their opportunity to provide input. We had our first, uh, public comment period opened on, I believe it was on July first of twenty twenty-two. And it was a, it was a sixty-day public comment period. We had, throughout that process, we had a total of eighty-eight public comments. We held two border review work sessions. Our border review is our board that, that, uh, has the final action on items, and it's a, it's a technical board. Uh, we had two special, um, work sessions with the border review where all of those eighty-eight public comments were considered in addition to other public, public comments at the, at the meeting. After that, we reconciled all of those comments into the code and opened a thirty-day public comment period. And throughout that, on October first of twenty twenty-two, we received twenty-nine comments through that period. Again, we had a special work session with the border review. Excuse me, and considered all of those, the board considered all of those comments. And on December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, the Board of Review approved the twenty twenty-three edition of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code. At that point, we need to start bringing the code to all of our member jurisdictions for adoption. So that's where we are today. Um, the the building code, what the twenty twenty-three Pike's Peak Regional Building Code does is it's broken up into three chapters. Chapter one is the administration of the department. Uh, we have gone through and modified chapter one in a couple of manners, really just kind of update it. We had something in there that you still had to submit paper plans. Well, now we submit, we, we have the availability to do electronic plans. So just some, some cleanup in chapter one. Chapter two is the contractor licensing section of the code, and that's the section that, uh, contains all the regulations for contractors, uh, what's required, insurance requirements, uh, action items for contractors who, who aren't following the code. And we had, again, we had some minor revisions in there, a lot of cleanup. Uh, chapter three is a technical section of the code. I get, let me back up for a second. Chapter one and two of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code stand on their own. So you can read those sections, and those are all of the requirements. Chapter three, you can't read on its own. You have to have the technical codes along with you, because what chapter three does is modify particular sections of the, of the technical codes. So the codes that are adopted by reference with the twenty twenty-three Pike's Peak Regional Building Code are the twenty twenty-one International Building Code. That's the commercial building code. The twenty twenty-one International Residential Code. That applies to one and two family dwellings, as well as townhomes. The International Mechanical Code, the, the mechanical aspect of the trades, the International Field Gas Code, the twenty twenty-one International Energy Conservation Code, the twenty twenty-one International Existing Building Code, and for the first time, the twenty twenty-one International Pool and Spa Code. We did have a section in our code, our local code, that pertain to pools and spas. But the twenty twenty-one code that's been developed at the international level is, is much more inclusive and much better than the simple code that we had. The twenty twenty-three, so there are, there are several codes that are adopted at the state level that this modification to the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code does not modify. That's the electrical code, the plumbing code, and then the codes that pertain to conveyances or elevators and escalators. Those are adopted by the state. When the state adopts those codes, we have twelve months to locally enforce those codes. The, I know probably the, the question that everybody wants to know is what's changed. And that's, that's a very difficult question, because we're talking about a stack of books that's really about two feet tall. It takes a lot of work to go through those codes. With the, with the building codes, to include the mechanical and fuel gas code, the changes are really very minor. There, those codes are much more refined now. They're, they're kind of cleaning up and taking advantage of new construction techniques and whatnot. The most significant changes are to the twenty twenty-one International Energy Conservation Code. And we were here before this board, um, a while back, to talk about some of the changes that were occurring at the state level. The state of Colorado, just about a year ago, passed House Bill twenty-two dash thirteen sixty-two. What that bill did is it required local jurisdictions that have adopted a building code, of which Monument has, uh, to adopt one of the three latest energy codes and to do so without making the code any less restrictive. So that would have been the, the twenty twenty-one, the two thousand eighteen, or the twenty fifteen. Right now, we're on the twenty fifteen code, but we have modifications to it. So we were already through our review process of the codes, at least internally, when this all occurred. So we had to back up and take another look at the energy code. What we did is we took the two thou- the twenty twenty-one International Energy Conservation Code, and we kind of worked it backwards to take some of the best things out of that code, because there are some good things in that code. Uh, and, and look at some of the things that the two thousand eighteen code, so we kind of that the two thousand eighteen code had, so we kind of mixed some of those requirements in there. The goal in this is to adopt, 'cause it's a significant jump to go from the twenty twenty fifteen code to the twenty twenty-one Energy Conservation Code. The House bill that I spoke to, thirteen sixty- The House Bill that I spoke to thirteen sixty-two also has a deadline in it that those, these local jurisdictions have to adopt and enforce these codes prior to June, prior to July first of twenty twenty-three. If they do, if they update their building codes after that, then they have no choice but to go to the twenty twenty-one International Energy Conservation Code unamended, plus the Model Electric and Solar Ready Code that the state of Colorado is currently writing. So not only is it the unamended code, it's, it's an additional code that's yet to be, yet to be written. We will ultimately be on that code because of the way that the, the law is written. But what this code does is offer us a stepping stone to get to the next level without, without taking a huge jump at one time. The other code that probably had some of the most significant changes to it was the accessibility code, commonly referred to as ADA, but local governments can't enforce ADA. So the International Building Code adopts the ANSI standards. And the ANSI standards are very similar to ADAG or the American With Disabilities Code. And there have been some, some significant changes to that code to increase accessibility that commercial contractors will need to make sure they're aware of so they don't get caught off guard by that. With that said, I completely went off my PowerPoint for that. I apologize. I do have a, a big piece of our staff here tonight, a lot of experts in the room that can answer any questions you might have. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hey, thank you. Um, any questions from the council?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question or two. You, you and I, you and I spoke a little bit about what these codes do to increase the cost and, in my opinion, some of these energy codes, um, the health in, inside these structures that become so airtight, um, that we have to bring makeup air in, in order to have combustible air inside the house. And I know, you know, the reason that they do it is because they want to save the energy costs. I, I personally don't like them getting so airtight that people are, are having health issues off of VOCs and, and other things. But it is what it is. And the, you know, the electric panels are getting really big and, um, it's becoming more difficult to retrofit older houses because there's sometimes a point of, or the, where the code applies to, to upgrade so much in the house that it becomes almost not even economically feasible. But, um, that's just a statement more or less. But the, um, the question I have is when we're talking about the ADA stuff, is that applying? Because I know there's, there's kind of like a loose requirement. It used to be there was a woman in the state and Nancy Snow was her name and she would go around and, and check these projects out because she was really big on making sure that multifamily was ADA compliant and adaptable compliant. Is, is that a requirement in this code for like apartments or, or townhouses outside of the federal level?
Yes, I can, I can definitely speak to that, um, to speak to your, your previous statement. It is interesting because the, the energy code does make that house very tight, but it now also requires outside ventilation into the home.
Right, exactly.
And the, the energy code kind of goes a step further into making sure that that air is tempered and a lot of energy recovery throughout that. Really what the, what the energy code, you spoke to the electrical code as well. Those are two codes that we lost local control of the electrical code at the state level and we're now losing control of the energy code at the local level as well. So, um, those are, those are things that we've worked very hard to maintain. Unfortunately, the loss of local control, uh, is just that. It means that we can no longer modify those codes for what are best for our jurisdictions. A good example to local control is the International Residential Code requires sprinklers in one and two family dwellings. Because it's not a state code, we have the ability to modify that and not require sprinklers in one and two family dwellings. And, and that's exactly what the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code does and maintains as we have in years past. To speak to the accessibility statement, there are, if we're talking about, if townhomes, townhomes fall into, under the International Residential Code and there are some accessibility provisions in there, but there's also a state statute that, that townhome developments have to comply with that's based on a point system to require. And you, you have to hit the points. You can do it however you like with a visitable unit, with an adaptable unit, with a fully accessible unit. The companion code, the International Residential Code, has some separate provisions. When we get into multifamily such as apartments, the same state statute applies. You have to hit a certain level access, of accessibility to meet the state statute. The International Building Code also has accessibility provisions in it as well. So the goal and intent is to make sure that there are accessible units, uh, within the, within the development.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that, that answers it because it, is it, there, there's a, there's a lot of confusion, or at least there used to be a lot of confusion and maybe it's not so much anymore. But there, there's confusion into what is considered adaptable, um, radiuses and three-foot wide doors and things like that. Particularly on ground floor units and, um, as to whether or not that they're even required to, to make them adaptable. And in, in some areas of the country, I've seen where it's not enforced and others where it's really enforced. And, um, but it seems like it's more of a federal thing.
It, the enforcement mechanism is federal and it's the, uh, Department of Justice is the enforcement mechanism. So if a local business doesn't have the accessible restroom that they should have, it's driven by a complaint. Someone notices that, they, they inform the Department of Justice and the Department, Department of Justice opens an investigation. So it's very important to us that as the building department, that we're making sure that we're not setting up those, those local businesses or, or property owners for failure. Not everybody likes to comply with the accessibility code, but if you don't, it's a whole lot harder to, after the fact than it is on paper. Uh, I can also tell you, I've been with the department for, uh, going on twenty, more than twenty years. And in that time, we have greatly improved the level that we do plan reviews and inspections for accessibility, among other items. We're very knowledgeable in that area now and a big part of that is a learning curve with knowing what you need to look for with plans. You've got a huge stack of books. It's very difficult to get every requirement. So years ago, there were things that were slipping, that were slipping through and that resulted in confusion. But a big piece of eliminating the confusion is making sure that you have a trained staff. And the newer codes are also more refined to make those, those requirements easier to understand and clearer, less ambiguity.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from Councilmember Kimpel online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, got a point of procedure here. Ms. Almer would like to discuss some of your options for you right now.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Um, an astute procedural question was raised by council for the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department about whether we have a statutory procedure we need to file, follow for adoption of this ordinance or if we default to your home rule charter. I would like to look at this, um, further before the council takes the action on this ordinance. There's no urgency to adopt this ordinance tonight. And, um, with the June thirtieth deadline and these energy efficiency requirements that, you know, are in play, we want to make sure that this is absolutely correct procedurally, uh, before you take any further action. So, um, it would be my recommendation that you table this until we bring it back to you after we've vetted that issue.
And because of the publication requirements, we figured it'd take fifteen days before the hearing and that would mean we'd bring it back to you on April third.
So do we make a motion to table then to April third or?
Hang on one second. I, I've got a, a question. Was this considered a public hearing item? Because usually it states that it would be and we would open it up.
We can table it without the public hearing as far as I understand, and Allison can correct me if I'm wrong. And I think that would be best because we need to do some notifications of the public hearing. So it'd be best to have that public hearing on April third or potentially even April seventeenth.
Okay, so third or seventeenth?
Why don't we just do the seventeenth?
Okay.
It's a good idea, by the way. Thank you.
All right, well, based on, uh, the,
you won't have to come back again a second time, will you? I mean, I'll be here. Okay.
Do you not want him here?
He wants to make sure it passes.
No, I will, I will, I fully intend to be here and I, and I appreciate that clarification. We really want to make sure we get this right because if we don't hit the, the deadline of June thirtieth, then we'll be stuck with, with the state codes.
All right, well, based on the, um, advice of our council, um, do I have a motion?
I move to table this item until April seventeenth.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mary LaKind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrito?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion, the table passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do better with my PowerPoint next time.
You just need to tell, tell Mr. Anderson, next slide, next slide, next slide. Okay, next is, uh, ordinance zero six, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section two dot zero four dot zero three zero G of the Monument Municipal Code regarding publications of ordinances. Ms. Hogan.
So publication requirements is a good segue into this ordinance. What's presented to you tonight is an ordinance written by our, uh, legal counsel. And what it would do if passed is it would basically amend our town code so that the publication requirements for ordinances specifically matches, is consistent language with our charter, but also allows us the opportunity to, to do publication on the town's website as opposed to in a newspaper of local circulation. So it would save the town obviously some cost because we wouldn't need to be, uh, paying for those, uh, publications in a newspaper. It would also shorten the timeframe for ordinances becoming effective. Currently, the statutory requirement is thirty days after publication in a newspaper of local circulation. I've always used the Tri-Lake Tribune because I feel like it's the most local circulation. And it takes, you know, nine days or so after a meeting to get it into the Tribune and then it's not effective until thirty days past that date. So this would shorten up the timeframe, um, and it would be consistent with the charter. And it would, after the passage of an ordinance, the town would publish the ordinance in full on our website. And the ordinance says for, uh, at least ten days, but that's where we do our permanent retention too. So it would never come down. That would be permanently, all the ordinances would be permanently posted on our town's website. And regardless, if, if this isn't the, you know, the way the council wants to go, we do need to clean the language up because it currently conflicts with the charter, uh, because it mimics what statute says of that thirty-day requirement. And the charter, uh, now basically says, um, ordinances are effective ten days after publication. And then it opens the door for the board, the council, excuse me, to determine what publication is, what meets those requirements.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding this?
So what you're suggesting is, is that we make them, that this says that we publish it on the internet, on the website right away, and then it becomes valid ten days from there?
Correct.
Okay.
Any procedural? No? Just checking.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, any, I'm good too. Any questions from, uh, Councilmember Kimpel?
Uh, no, I like to shorten time, which expedites, uh, its effective date.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions, then I will look for a motion.
Point of order.
Oh, it's ordinance, public hearing?
It's an ordinance.
Okay, I, we take that back. Seeing this is a public hearing item, we'll open this up for public. Uh, anybody from the public would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Is there anybody here in the room that would like to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Anderson, is anybody online? Okay, that'll bring it back for discussion with the council.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number oh six, two oh two three, in ordinance amending section two point oh four point oh three oh G of the Monument Municipal Code regarding publications of ordinances.
A second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Burito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary LaKind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to discussion items, publication requirements. Feel like we just talked about that. Ms. Hogan.
Okay, so yeah, this is, uh, somewhat related. We just addressed publication requirements for ordinances specifically. And, um, the charter also opens up some opportunity for us to define publication requirements for other things such as, uh, well, they're highlighted on your board memo. Budget hearings, uh, um, adoption of budgets, expenditure, expenditures, um, public expenditures, excuse me. Certain things with land use hearings. So I was asked by our legal counsel what staff felt like as far as, um, recommendations for these types of publication requirements. And obviously the staff is in favor of utilizing our website for these types of publications as well. But ultimately, it would be up to the council to decide that. And I, I just wanted to open up a discussion just to get some direction on whether you would want an ordinance proposed modifying and clarifying and identifying these publication requirements in, in the, uh, board memo that was in the council packet.
I think there's value to that, that, and, and publishing to the website, I, I like it because it standardizes everything. Um, and so when you have, when, when you're able to, to know that you go, you go to the website for everything, I, I like, I like that standardization. I, I like that idea. And I'm assuming it, it's not too much of a, um, of an ask to, to write a whole new ordinance for, for this piece as well. I'm, I'm guessing.
No, it, we, we, there's going to be a lot of ordinances that clean up obsolete language in our town code. And, um, a lot of opportunity opened up by the charter. And this is an example of a couple of them. And I mean, that's what we're going to spend a good majority of the next couple of years doing is identifying these things and, and getting them all lined out the way that the council wants them.
I, I think there's a lot of value to this. I, my only concern is, uh, before it was with the, the, the newspaper partly, right? As well as the website as far as publications go?
Yeah, a publication for, for the most part, or at least all the aspects that I was aware of, uh, meant publication in a local newspaper.
Right, and I don't, I don't know what the Gazette does, but there's been a couple of residents who've made it clear that our website is not ADA compliant. It has no capabilities for site and, and impairment. And we discussed this and there's some requirements coming down from CML or the state. And I was wondering, with all of these things moving to the website, which is fine, how are we going to address the issues of ADA complacency of the website itself?
We're currently working on that. We're working with, um, Madeline can speak to that actually.
It actually does have the ability, if you, we, we test it every time we put content on the website to see that it can be read. So. So there could be instances where it's not perfect, but we are working with our website. Provider Civic Plus and they and another company that they have hired to help make sure that we are meeting that compliance issue.
Is that relatively new? Because at the election period, there were people who couldn't get information on the elections from our site.
It's not. We've had it in place since, well, Civic Plus has implemented that part of the site reader for a couple of years now. But we've had the other part of the program on our website since last May.
Okay.
Well, as a former member of the Homeroal Charter Commission, we, when we wrote that language regarding notifications, we left it a little bit loose in the language because communication styles change. And we wanted to be able to to not nail that down to one particular type of publication. Our intent was to make it as efficient as possible and to reach as many people as possible. And, you know, by the same token, try to to cut down on expenses for the town. So you know, I'm a hundred percent in favor of having a central location on the town website. And I would, you know, also like to make sure that we do get that squared away as far as the the ADA aspects of it go, because I don't want to leave anybody out, you know, whatever we need to do to do that. I'm not sure where that goes. But again, our intent was to make it efficient.
I have a quick question. So if it goes on the website, it will not be published in the local paper. Is this true? It's either or.
Well, the ordinance that you just passed, specifically that that would be for ordinances that are passed in the future. Those will be posted to the town's website.
Website, okay.
This is just a discussion to get some feedback and we will draft an ordinance based on this feedback that will come forward to you again.
Further in the future.
And we'll have more opportunity for discussion and potentially, you know, passage or modification or whatever. But if that ordinance specifies certain things are posted in certain places, then that's what will follow. But the good thing is that's simply an ordinance. It's not written into the charter, which was, which would need a whole vote of citizenry to change.
Right.
So, but we'd like to identify how each specific item, how the council would like that to be published. But, you know, ordinances can be modified by future ordinances too.
Okay.
So it could be just the council, this council's desire at this time. And we can go from there.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have anything else? No? You need any direction from us at this point?
I don't think so. I mean, it sounds like there aren't any concerns specifically with what was highlighted in the memo. Potentially drafting an ordinance that would allow for publication on the website. It doesn't sound like I didn't receive any feedback that sounded like you don't want to move in that direction. So so what we'll do is draft an ordinance, we'll get with legal counsel and draft an ordinance and bring it back at a future meeting.
I guess the only question I would add to this is what about those who don't go online?
That, you know, that is a concern, yeah. I mean, we can.
Would there be, we could, we could create an alternate location for these publications?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a number of publications. We, we have our work boards here at the lobby. We used to do the post office for meeting agendas and whatnot, but that got very crowded and it also, half the time the lock wouldn't work and someone else would open it up and take your posting down. So I wouldn't recommend that. I would recommend definitely Town Hall if you wanted a physical location. I don't know if you're thinking of do you have a suggestion or a?
No, just throwing it out there for those people who are not carrying eighteen phones around with them and their laptop and a tablet and things like that.
Yep.
Okay, then if there's nothing else, we'll, we can come back and talk about this again with another time. Next up is public comments. If there's anybody in the room that would like to make a public comment for something that's not on the agenda, for those who are on teams, they can raise their hand to comment and we will get you online here in a few minutes. Yes? Can you let us know your name too? So we all. Great, thank you.
Stephanie Force, I am the Director of Development for Tri-Lakes Cares. I just wanted to take this time to show our gratitude from myself, Haley, our Executive Director, and Tri-Lakes Cares for all of your support you guys have given us throughout the year. I wanted to take this time to present a certificate of appreciation for you. And if at some point in the night I can get a group photo so that we could also put it on our social media to thank you as well.
Okay.
Just a very quick one for you all.
Thank you very much. See, all right. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to make a public comment? Mr. Anderson, anybody online? Okay, no hands. Then we'll bring it back for council authorization items. National Library Week proclamation on April seventeenth. Anybody going to talk to that? We're going to have somebody from the library board. Yep. Can we do that? Okay, all right. Good one. All right. That was easy. All right, council comments. Any council members have any comments that they would like to make?
Well, I was, yeah, I, well, I was gonna, well, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I am. Sure. No. I just, I know that Mr. Foreman, you sent out a email regarding sessions over the next couple of months. Yeah, that's fine. If the board, if that's the board's direction, that's fine. Just for me and tax season through April seventeenth, that would be very difficult for me. But if that's the board's direction, then then that's the board's direction. I also know that on March twentieth, myself and Marco will be remote. I also thought Ken was, but maybe that was today.
I think he is.
I, so I would really want to move that executive session as I think it's important, being three of us aren't going to be here physically. If there's going to be an important executive session that evening.
I don't disagree.
Okay. So April third.
Everybody gonna be here? Or?
For the executive session.
As long as it works out for those that are remote, or that not, they're not going to be remote. You won't be remote April third?
No, no.
No, no. I'll be back too.
Allison, does it work for you?
One of the two of them will always be here.
Okay.
And then we're probably looking at group photos on April third also because as you can see tonight, Mr. Kimpel's not here. And then also, as you said, on the twentieth, three of you possibly aren't going to be here. And so I think April third probably would be the first time you'll be back together in person. So I just want to see you in a suit, sir. We're going to do the, we're going to do the individuals tonight, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll.
And we'll do Tri-Lakes Cares.
But Ken doesn't care because he's not here, so.
I also think that we should plan after April eighteenth would be great, a leadership board retreat. That would be an overnight retreat. The last time we did that, it was very bonding. It really brought us together quite a bit. Not just a day long, which is more like a workshop, but if we could start thinking about that over the next six months, that might be a good idea as well.
Camping on Mount Herman? I'm just kidding.
I, I hadn't even thought about it, to be honest.
Okay.
But I don't disagree. I thought it was, it's out.
It's out.
Out in the wind.
Yep, just give us direction on dates, because I know everybody has a travel schedule and everything like that. So everybody kind of shoots a date. When you would like to do something like that, we have plenty of opportunities for training.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Anybody else have?
I do have one thing. So it actually jogged my memory. And I'm going to lean on Tom Tharnish on this one. Speaking of water tours and whatnot, CSU does a three day infrastructure trip that they sponsor that I strongly, highly recommend. Obviously not the entire board at the same time, but and I don't know when they do this, and I don't know if they still do it. But I took, I took advantage of it, excuse me, and it was, it was fantastic. So and if you haven't done it, Mike, it's also well worth doing it. So.
Yeah, I'm trying to schedule it for the next one.
Okay.
Definitely.
Those trips or training events, I don't know exactly what they call them. But in the past, Carers Pings Utility has offered two of those. And I think they used to alternate at different times. One is the Home Stake Pipeline Tour and the other one is the Blue River. And they basically take you to where their system starts with diversion off the Colorado River and other lakes. And then you tour the Otero Pump Station, the Twin Lakes Pump Station. It's, for us, when I went back in two thousand eight, I think there was, it's a two day event. They put you overnight, I think it's Salida, and then they pay for the meals and put you and they put you on a Greyhound bus. And every minute that you're on the bus, there's some experts speaking to you, their counsel or their attorneys or, you know, engineers and so. Yeah, it's a very, it's a very enlightening, you'd be surprised the technology that went into that system a hundred years ago. And how they developed it and bought the water rights and everything. I mean, it'd be a good for someone like Mike to go to and and board members if you have the opportunity.
I think we had that scheduled, but then COVID hit, right?
Yeah, it might have been. They typically do it in the fall, like in September, maybe early October.
I, I took, I did the, is it Home Stake? Where it started at J D Phillips. We went down to Pueblo to the the southern point of the, or the start of the SDS. And then we went all the way up to, I think we ended up in Leadville. And and then we came back down. It was three days. And yeah, like, like Tom said, it was, it was amazing to to be a part of that because it, because like you said, there's never a dull moment. You're always talking to someone that's on the, either on the CSU board, on the engineering team, on the, on the water. It was, it was very educational and it was well worth it. So just.
If you do the Blue River, you start in Breckenridge at Hoosier Pass. They have a tunnel through the mountain that diverts off Blue River. And then you end up at the Otero Pump Station outside of Buena Vista. Then you end up in Salida overnight and then all down the Arkansas River and you end up at the Pueblo Dam Pump Station. And then the SDS treatment plant out on Mark Shuffels where it ended. But yeah, it's a good, it's a good opportunity they offered again.
Cool. Hey, Mr. Anderson, the screen's frozen.
I don't know.
That's your group picture? Right. Okay. As far as other council comments, I had one. This is related to the extra the extra positions that we take on the various boards and councils around the area. I'd like to start implementing a board report beginning. Well, let's, we'll do it after tax season. Where the the month of, you'll, you'll report on what you learned the the previous month. So CML, in that, in fact, we're going to bring that up. As I understand it, Councilmember Kimpel cannot provide lead on the CML legislative work. And so we will have that position open as far as lead goes. And if there's anybody who would like to raise their hand to do the CML work, that would be great. I s, got a, got one.
And I'll, I'll back her up. I'll be, I'll be her deputy dog.
Will you, will you have time if she can't go? So some of these things are definitely online.
Okay.
At the beginning of the legislative session, they are definitely up in Denver.
Okay.
I mean, you can do them online, but to really get the feel for it and get your voice heard, being up in the room with them is, is pretty important as I, as I learned this year. So, okay, so then we're going to change the names of the primary and the secondary. Councilmember Chronic will take primary. Councilmember Fierito will take backup for the CML stuff.
Yep.
And then.
I was going to volunteer to be Jim's backup for the, the water peat. No.
We, there isn't one.
There isn't one. Okay.
We already looked into it, but we're going to create a new one if everybody is good with that. Now that we have a new water authority, it, it only makes sense that somebody from the council, since it, since Mr. Foreman is representing as a board member, that we would have our own council member represent and report back what their findings are for the the water authority that's going into the loop.
And everyone, every one of the boards that have a member on, on the, every one of the districts that have a member on the board also have council that attend the meeting.
So I believe Mr. Fierito, with his interest in Aqua would be an excellent source to to do that reporting. And so starting, let's say, May, the first meeting in May, we would begin doing our board reports.
When are the meetings again?
I just sent them to you.
Okay.
I sent them there every Thursday.
Every Thursday?
And so we have the third Thursday of every month, we have our actual meeting. The rest of the time we have workshops. And they'll either be here two months, two times a month, they're here, two times a month, they're in Cherokee. We'll send you the schedule.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had to bring up about is there's no other.
I have a procedural question. Are you asking for a new agenda item on agendas or you just want to do that during council comments?
We can do it during council comments.
Okay.
Yeah. But thank you for asking. Okay, is there any other council comment, council member comments? Mr. Kimpel, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one thing I missed chiming in at the end of the El Paso County presentation. You know, adopting the new building codes. My.
We tabled it. What we tabled?
Yeah, I just, if we could, I know we tabled it, but if we can ask them or during their next presentation, how many other municipalities, towns that they've already spoke to and that those places have either agreed or disagreed or pushed back or what they had issues with? If we can find that information out and they can present that to us, I think that would be something that we should all know, hear and understand.
Okay, council member Abbott, could you reach out to Mr. Level at the next meeting? When is your next meeting?
Sorry, the next meeting is Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Okay, so if you could find out the answer to that question, provide it to Mr. Foreman, he could send it out to the council.
Yep.
Definitely.
See what, what other municipalities have adopted the new code that we just tabled.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Kimpel?
No, just like who has or who has not agreed to that? You know, why or why not? And what would be the rationale for it? And what, if you don't agree to it, then what's the, what's the alternative?
I will send him an email tomorrow and I'll send it to Mike when I get my answer.
I don't think there is any alternative with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department.
That's good, yeah.
They're, they're adopting the code and the, the energy code part of it is, is the part that's critical because we don't want to be going to the twenty twenty one energy code at this stage of the game.
I thought he said that if we don't adopt it, we get stuck with the state.
Exactly.
And that's what Councilmember King's on the energy code referring to.
Yeah, so, so the rest of the region with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. So, so the rest of the region with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, um, there, they have to be on board because it's Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. So there's only, there's only a few things that we're up for discussion. And then I think that was just the energy code, but we can, we can clarify that.
Okay, any, anything else from the council? No? Okay, uh, then we are going to move on to executive session. Oh, yeah. How do you want to do the photo?
Just stand. Just stand, stand in front of the flags and stuff. She'll do that. Should be adjourning afterwards. No answer.
No big deal.
Sure, stuff can go home.
But either way, we're happy either way. I just thought.
Yeah, no, that works. That's a great idea.
Good job tonight, Laura. She is the best town clerk I've ever looked at in a while. Yeah, she's not a town clerk anymore. She's Director of Operations. So she's really good. She still works as a. She's training her. I think we, we hired a new town clerk. It's coming on April 1.
Still stuck with me.
Dippity dog.
Yep. Uh, we can, we can put it in her frame and hang it up. Yep. Yeah, well, that's typically what we do. We just, we put them in frames and hang them up around town hall. So guess what you get? Five phones.
Well, we can kill, I can kill this meeting. Start a new one with just him.
And, uh, procedurally wise, we're, because Mr. Kimpel, Councilmember Kimpel's not in the room. We're going to have to kill this meeting and we'll start a new meeting that he can join just by himself. We're about to tell him that. Hopefully he's listening right now. Yeah, hopefully you heard and Drew will send him an invite.
We are going to, um, move into executive session. Before I ask for a motion, um, I would like to just inform Mr. Kimpel that, um, this, uh, this team's meeting will end and you will receive an email, uh, from Mr. Anderson with the new meeting invite link that will take you back into the executive session in about a minute. We'll take a five-minute recess for Drew to learn how to use email.
So many devices.
Mr. Kimpel, you good with that? Mr. Kimpel? All right, well, we are going to take a recess.
Wait, wait.
To make a motion for it.
I, I, I make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4, excuse me.
He'll, he'll be back in a minute.
Mr. Foreman?
We're, we're in a meeting.
Um, I make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 4B and 4E to discuss the statutes of the title. The status of the title of Monument Hill Tank Site and to develop negotiation strategy, instruct negotiators and receive legal advice regarding the same.
We have a motion, we have, we have a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary LaKind?
Yes, that motion passes seven to zero. Take a five-minute recess.